Okay, hello everybody. I'd like to welcome everyone to East Dundee's regular board meeting of trustees dated Monday, April 21st, 2025. I have six oh two. Caleb. Try to take the roll.
Trustee Saviano?
Here.
Trustee Kunsy?
Present.
Trustee Mahoney?
Here.
Trustee Britton?
Here.
Trustee Satter is absent. President Alana?
Here. And if you'll rise with me for the question. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Now it'll take us to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address the board on an agenda or a non-agenda item? Seeing none, we'll move on. And it'll take us to announcements. I have a quick proclamation to read for Arbor Day, which is April 25th, 2025, whereas in 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for planting of trees, and whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heat and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, providing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees in our village increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of the business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, and are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey Lyman, president of Village East Dundee, do hereby proclaim April 25th, 2025 as Arbor Day in the Village of East Dundee, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and further, I would urge all citizens to plant the tree, to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and our future generations. Thank you. Okay, now that'll take us to our consent agenda. It's a long one, so if we could have a motion.
I will move to approve. May I just read the item letters?
Yes, but I would also like to remove item M.
M.
The last one.
Okay, so I will move to approve items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, and L.
We need to remove G, actually.
I thought we said we did not need to remove G.
No, we don't need to remove it.
We have enough to vote the three-quarter, if necessary.
Okay.
Okay.
I will second.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Kunsy?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Okay. Item M, I just wanted to just point out a couple of things.
Do we have to open that up as an option for discussion?
Oh, yes, we have a motion, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'll move to approve resolution authorizing the procurement of bike and pedestrian plan professional services in the amount not to exceed of eighty-four thousand nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and eighty cents with Civil Tech Engineering.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. Is there? Okay. Do we have somebody here from Civil Tech?
Yes.
We do, okay.
Melissa Sweeney is here.
Okay.
She's the director of transportation planning services. Can I answer any questions? Do you have to introduce her, or whatever your preference is?
Yeah, well, I just wanted to point out to everyone, in the event that they didn't, since we have such a long consent agenda, if you didn't happen to get that deep into the woods, the items that we're being asked to spend eighty-five thousand dollars on make no sense to me at all, and I just wanted to point that out to the village. If you read through this stuff, I mean, it's like the ultimate in consulting ease, and I just really would like to read it, just for the, for the group. Flexible engagement plan for optimal community outreach, including an open house, a pop-up event, a steering committee, and a walking biking tour. Number two, inclusion and emphasis on GIS/digital tools for its data collection and analysis stages. Number three, prioritization of state route corridors and park district trails to improve the overall network of the community. Four, an implementation-focused planning that provides planning-level cost estimates that can be utilized to seek grant opportunities for projects. And five, the most affordable cost for the optional complete streets policy to give village officials more guidance and direction during the future capital improvements. You know, I read through this, and I'm thinking, is this an expenditure we really need to, to take on when what we're really talking about is, here, a summary, as part of the 2025 budget, the village set out to find a qualified consultant to develop a bike and pedestrian plan to further improve the connectivity of East Dundee's bicycle and pedestrian pathways throughout the village, especially along the Fox River. Man, there's really not a lot you can do along the Fox River, and I can't really get a handle on what it was we're going to be getting eighty-five thousand dollars worth of value from.
Can I add that I think, I mean, I'd like, I'd like a little bit more information perhaps, but I do think there are other areas of town, like along 25, and connecting existing bike routes to existing bike routes where they don't connect right now.
Or they don't exist.
That's what I, right, that's what I would foresee this doing, not necessarily, you know, exactly, but yeah, I think more information is worth.
And I don't mean to be nitpicky about it, or anything like that, or to denigrate anybody, but it just seems as though it's an awful lot of money to spend, and I'm just struggling with where the benefit to the village is. So if you'd like to kind of give us a rundown of what it is we are going to be getting for our money.
Can I ask a question? Like, one of our key trustees here that's been championing this whole initiative is not here today.
Right.
And so I have, I have two issues. I have an issue with us, I don't have an issue with us being educated further on this, and more scope. I don't know if he's had a chance to be involved in this, because I know he gets very involved. He might, is he already involved in this, do we know?
So, he did reach out to me last week and provided some names for community members who are available and interested in helping develop the plan.
Right.
Who have an intimate knowledge of cycling throughout the region. So I've added those names to the list of people that we're going to reach out to, but we're also going to put out a larger call to, call for volunteers.
Okay.
Because we need a different variety of perspectives of people who sporadically bike, sporadically walk to places, people that walk to places all the time, so that we can, you know, get the most.
The neighborhood dog walkers?
Exactly.
And all the old people that I meet when I'm walking my dog. Yeah, so, you know, and I will take, I, I agree with you that it shouldn't have been on a consent agenda necessarily at this dollar level. However, one of our key initiatives for the last 20 years has been to make East Dundee a livable, walkable, bikeable, safe community. We have, we are fortunate to have the bike path coming through. So that brings us opportunities, as well as challenge, safety challenges. And so I definitely think, let's, let's see what they have to say, and then maybe possibly look at continuing this until we can have Andy here, and we can have a little bit more in-depth conversation about it with, with him.
Okay.
Sorry, thanks.
No, it sounds good. I'm happy to invite Lisa Sweeney. As I mentioned, she's with Civil Tech Engineering. I'll bring, invite her to come up and speak to you in just a moment, answer any questions that you may have. And I think you spoke to it very nicely. You know, we were, we received six proposals. I'll just kind of go over briefly what's in our, in our memo. We received proposals from six firms, very, very qualified firms. We found that the Civil Tech Engineering proposal was exceptional. They took the time to understand the community, at least on a proposal level, did their research, and it came out in their proposal to us. And again, it really speaks to our want and desire to create a more pedestrian and bicycle-friendly community village-wide, not just along Water Street or along the Fox River Trail. Fox River Trail, of course, is a pedestrian bicycle pathway, but the idea is to connect us with our adjacent communities. We have a desire to, folks like to bike and connect into the outside, into the Cook County area, to our east, and certainly, perhaps even Elgin to our south, and Carverville to our north, and so on and so forth. So, Lisa, would you mind coming in? Lisa, her firm has done a number of studies similar to this with other communities. She mentioned they're currently doing something similar in Elgin. They also did one for the city of St. Charles in recent years. So I'm happy to invite Lisa to come up and answer any questions that you may have.
Yeah, sure. We have a few slides that I can kind of talk through some of the scope items in a little bit more detail. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to come here this evening and talk to you about our proposal and potential project. So here we have kind of the overall process for the bicycle and pedestrian plan that we're proposing. It's about a year long or so, and I'll just kind of touch on some of these different aspects that kind of lead to creating this overall plan. And as you noted, it is both building on existing assets, such as, you know, regional trail in the community, as well as really identifying where people are trying to go, and why, you know, why they can't get there potentially. So looking at those connections for both walking and for biking. So as part of this, we would be completing a sidewalk needs assessment. So seeing where there are sidewalk gaps in the community, again, where people are trying to go and trying to make those safe connections. And as part of this, too, it would be a combination of the planning team, as well as the engineering team on our end. So it wouldn't necessarily, you know, once we kind of develop some overall connectivity that I'll mention, we would then kind of do a deeper dive and look at more of the engineering feasibility of that, as well as funding and implementation, and improvements to key intersections. So with that, I'll just talk through some of the items that we had mentioned in here. The first of which is really vision and goal setting. So getting an understanding of the village's vision for this plan, you know, what was the impetus for creating it. One of those items is also holding that biking, the walking and biking tour. And so that's something that we found very valuable with staff, with key stakeholders, as you mentioned, to just get out there and walk throughout, you know, to try to reach different destinations in the community, potentially get on bikes and get a feel for what the issues are, because a lot of times, obviously, looking at maps, looking at aerials, looking at engineering plans, you don't get a feel for what's actually happening. As well as really engaging the community in this process. So forming that steering committee, where you're mentioning some of those key stakeholders. So bringing together a steering committee to meet twice, as well as kind of outlining what this engagement process looks like. So again, we don't want to come into the community and make assumptions of you're trying to get to this park here and this medical facility, but really hearing from the community where you're trying to go. And so part of that, there'd be the community feedback aspect, and then there would also be the data and plan scan aspect. So plan scans, in terms of looking at the comprehensive plan, the strategic plan, the riverfront master plan, as well as looking at larger county plans, to see where that, where those, one, where that connectivity could be reinforced, and then how we can bring kind of some of those principles and goals together. We would also be looking at wayfinding signage and best practices, so that it's not just, you know, providing those facilities in the future, but ways to direct residents or visitors to make sure they know where they're trying to go, and they can connect those dots as well. Part of that data and plan scan is also really focusing on safety. So at the heart of the plan would be providing safety improvements for community members. And so we would be looking at crash history, for example, over the past five years, and you'll see kind of a heat map there of crashes, I think, 2019 to 2023. And we would look into bicycle and pedestrian specific crashes, as well as overall crashes, both within the village, as well as for the surrounding areas, to, again, try to zoom in on why those crashes are occurring, and to be able to make some, some improvements for people walking and biking around those, those areas. Again, the sidewalk need assessment that I mentioned, so we'd be reviewing where there's gaps, where there's opportunities for connectivity. We would look at other data sets as well, in addition to safety. So everything from, I mean, floodplains, if applicable, to a, the daily, daily traffic along both local and IDOT routes in the area, signalization, and then those kind of regional trails, amongst other data sets. And then, in order to assist with this, we would also have an online interactive map. We found that to be effective, recognizing that, you know, a lot of times, everyone's busy. People don't have time to necessarily go to a meeting. So we'd be supplementing some of the outreach with an online map, where people could kind of drop pins, Google Map style, and note where they see challenging intersections, where key destinations are, where they're, where they're coming from, where they're trying to go. And so we would supplement that with either a pop-up meeting or virtual meetings. Pop-up meeting is basically just going to where people are. So here's at like a local festival, or like a, a local biking event, to talk to community members. Again, recognizing people are busy. There's, we were trying to avoid planning fatigue in terms of not having a designated time and space for all the meetings, but reaching people in different ways. And we found that to be effective, to make sure that we hear as many voices as possible. So with all that information, we would then develop a network that really focuses on pedestrians, bicyclists, as well as taking into consideration all modes. So also looking at how motor vehicles are going around, and how they would or would not be impacted by improvements that we're suggesting. And then from that, we would have a bicycle pedestrian network developed. We developed some design recommendations, hone in on some key intersections, and have kind of a toolbox also of those potential improvements. The catalytic locations, this is again, those kind of intersection improvements, we focus on a handful of locations that would have the most impact to the community. We would draft a plan, we would talk about this with the steering committee one more time to get feedback on this network, and then we'd present it at an open house.
Can I interrupt to ask a question really quickly? On that, if you're, if you're focusing on just a handful of specific locations, will we have access to your entire, like, all of the information you gather? What I'm thinking is, while certain intersections, certain locations maybe need a higher level of attention, you know, working with the folks at Gardner Place on a regular basis, they have a lot of issues with our aging sidewalks downtown, and their ability to cross streets near them and things like that, like, there's no sidewalk on 25, but there's a bus stop. And I'd want to know all of that, not just the little parts and pieces that maybe like, or bike path doesn't connect.
You want something more comprehensive.
I want a comprehensive. And will we receive that comprehensive?
Yeah, that's a great, yes, that's a great question. Yeah, so everything, so we would create kind of a, an existing conditions report, where we would put all this information. You could also have all the, you'll have all the GIS files that we create as well. And if there's certain aspects that you're particularly focused in, we could definitely, you know, try to pull those out or make those more accessible as well, or discuss them with you.
Thank you.
So then this is, I believe, the last kind of scope item that we're talking through, and this is implementation. So again, recognizing that providing just a plan doesn't have as much teeth or a lasting impact, I would say. And so with that, we really focus on implementation. We're familiar with both on the grant writing end, as well as providing planning-level cost estimates. So really, for all the improvements that we recommend, from sidewalks to shared-use paths, to intersection improvements, we provide cost estimates for all of those. We would also prioritize all of the improvements we're suggesting, based on criteria that we discuss with, with the village, with community members. And then we'd also break it down into kind of tier, into like tier one, tier two, tier three, based on more of the low-hanging fruit versus those that might require grant funding. So we try to provide a very clear path for funding these improvements, alongside recommending grant opportunities that align with each of those. And then with that, also kind of integrated throughout this whole process, would be developing that complete streets policy. And that, that is also, one, kind of setting a vision for, for the village, in terms of recognizing and prioritizing all modes. It also sets up the village well for potential future funding opportunities, where a lot of times now, complete streets are integrated into regional or state grant opportunities. And so you kind of get more, more points for, for those, depending on the opportunity that you're looking at. So with all of that, we would then get a final plan together, as well as look to discuss that with, with everyone here.
I have a question. Do you help with the grant writing? And what's the success rate? Like, it's eighty-five thousand for this, but how much in grants have you helped procure? And, you know, like, would it offset the cost?
That's a really, that's a really good question. So I think specifically in here, we just have the grant identification. We do assist with grant writing. We've secured, so we actually write all the transportation-related grants for the city of Chicago. So we've secured over $300 million for the city in the last three years. Across all of the municipalities that we've worked with, we've secured over 500 million. So that's something we're happy to, to also assist with. Primarily, what we have here is we're just gearing the plan in a certain direction, so that will be set up really well for all these pots of funding. But I think within this existing scope, it's not writing a grant at the, at the end.
So seeking the grant would be on us?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anybody else?
Could show the explanation.
One quick comment. So trustee Satter did also ask for the discussion to be on tonight's agenda, and then recognizing that he was out of town on work, I asked him if he wanted to push it, so that he could be here for that, and he said no, he wanted to provide his thoughts, but continue to make sure that it pushed forward.
Okay.
So that's also why we put it on the consent agenda, too, because it was a budget expense that he's been advocating for, for several years, but I.
It wasn't on the consent, it was on just the regular agenda items?
Well, I mean, the bike plan.
Oh, the bike plan, okay. Oh, got it.
Cool.
Okay.
And also, she mentioned this, but it's critically important to have these plans to get grant funding.
Yeah.
Without it, you know, this is why we did the riverfront master plan, this is why we need to do this plan, because without a plan, you don't even get looked at for funding. So it's an investment in the future.
I would agree, except I would wonder about the value of this kind of a study as time goes on, and if we're not ready to make a move to put in this kind of plan or implement it right away, the more time that passes, the value of the plan diminishes. And to be honest with you, and I don't mean, like I say, to demean anybody's work or anything, but it just seems that we've got an engineer on staff, as far as village outreach committees and so forth, and community consultation, GIS access, and we're going to be writing the grants to seek the money to do it. I just question the value of eighty-five thousand dollars with what's been presented. So I would urge the board to reconsider this, until we are in a better position, from a timing standpoint, to implement it.
If I may add, one more point that we discussed, too, is with the future development of our riverfront, our ongoing development of our downtown area, Hager Pottery, our community events, and all the events that will be coming to East Dundee this year and in future years, one of the objectives is to, to give all of our residents minimally a pathway to all of these areas, to play, to recreate, to do whatever. And also, when people coming into town, whether it's pedestrian or cyclist, they have a pathway to all of these different areas, again, the riverfront, downtown, Hager, in time. So this creates the connectivity, a conduit, a safe, ideally a safe pathway, to enjoy the community of East Dundee and celebrate our events and our downtown, and so on and so forth.
Yeah, and I, like I say, I understand that argument, and then to one other point that Sarah had made, as far as crumbling infrastructure, or sidewalks that need repair, this really isn't something that we need to be paying a consultant to tell us. I mean, we have a streets program put into place that covers that. We have public works, we have an engineer, we have a building department, that I think, given the number of, and miles, if you will, of sidewalk that we have in that village, we're easy, easy enough to handle that ourselves. So again, I just, I just, I'm not seeing the entire value of this from the dollars and cents that we're talking about putting out for it, so.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, we have people on staff. However, we don't have people on staff that specialize in this, and have put together plans for other communities, and been able to put together plans that are comprehensive enough to be able to secure grants.
No.
And so. Let me finish.
Okay.
And so, you know, we don't know what we don't know. We've also got a lot of other things on our, our plate that we're, we're trying to juggle. They have access to the riverfront plan, they have access to the other things. I'd really like to just continue this to the next meeting, for when Andy is here, and, and can also, and can also voice his opinion on this, and.
Good enough.
And move forward at that time, if everybody else, so what do I need to do, make?
Can, can I ask one quick question? If we were to proceed with something like this, what could we realistically expect to spend on the grant writing portion that you've charged? What would that run?
That's fair. If you're interested in having us assist with, like, one grant?
Yeah, I mean, if we go ahead and we implement this plan, whatever it's going to run, and then we go further and start seeking out money, what would we expect to pay for the grant service?
Sure. So I think that would vary, I guess, depending on the grant, whether it's a, you know, like, regional, state, or a federal grant. I think that it would range anywhere from two to five thousand, depending on the level of complexity of it. But yeah, I would, I would need to go back and take a look if there are specific ones that might align with, like, the timeline, or some of the current needs that we see, and we could probably provide a better estimate.
Okay.
I was looking at some of the plans that they have in here from other municipalities. I particularly like that you're addressing not just the sidewalks and paths, but actual street makeup, adding lanes to existing streets and other, you know, methods that have actually been shown, proven through study, to reduce speeds, which, you know, every, everybody loves to talk about not writing enough tickets and everything like that for our speed, but there's only so much, you know, the police, you know, fence can do. And, you know, some of these road dressings, you know, can significantly contribute to lowering speeds. And I, you know, I think that it's well worth it to, to, you know, to come up with a plan that takes some of that into account.
Especially if it sets us up to be able to get grants. I think that's, if that's like a foundation, and we need that, then yeah, I think that's important.
Great points, and also some of the challenges associated with three major state routes through the community, 68, 25, and 72. And certainly, there's challenges with pedestrian safety along, across those roadways and pathways. And I will mention, too, briefly, Campbell and I really received two emails from companies, other firms who submitted proposals, and after seeing this agenda, or this item on tonight's agenda, both had. And after seeing this agenda, or this item on tonight's agenda, both had, I want to say it was both, but both had positive comments, one in particular about Lissa and also civil tech engineering. So we feel like not only we as staff, our review team, but also the respect that they have from their-
From their competitors.
-consultant peers is, was, was very positive.
Okay. Anybody else?
I have no problem tableing this until the next meeting.
Okay.
Personally.
The May fifth? Or the, what, the-
May fifth.
May fifth.
May fifth, okay.
So you need to amend your motion and make a motion to postpone to May fifth?
Make a motion, you'll have to amend it?
I, I do. I will actually amend my motion to postpone this vote until May fifth, the next meeting we have.
Good.
And I'll second, I think I seconded it, right?
You, you did.
And would you be able to send to us, Erica, the- Thank you. Presentation.
The slides are in the-
We got it, okay, good.
Slides are in here, in the presentation. In the-
I believe there are also, there's a link to that, to this slideshow on our website.
On the website, okay, that's-
It's next weekend.
They're all in here.
Okay, good enough, just as long as it's on the website.
There's actually more information in the packet than there was on the slides.
Yeah, a lot more detail.
Okay, and who made the second?
I did, and I just seconded it.
Okay, so-
It's just a motion to postpone.
We don't have to amend it.
Okay. So if you wanna-
Thank you.
We need the motion postponed, do we already made that? You already made it and amended it?
She just clarified it for the record.
Okay, so we're good, it's, it's clarified for the record.
And-
Do we need a vote?
Do we need a vote on-
Yeah.
For the next meeting, right, to push it forward, so. Thank you.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Kunczi?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Okay, that's going to take us to our other agenda items, the meat of the, the evening, if we could have motion for item A.
I will move to approve an ordinance adopting a comprehensive plan for the village of East Dundee.
Okay.
There were some proposed-
Amendments?
Amendments as well that we received.
You wanna-
I want to look at those. I know that we kind of had this on the last agenda. I just, I, real quick, the ones that have been proposed include designating Route twenty-five as an automotive related uses corridor for future development, amending page seventeen of the comprehensive plan, future land use map plan and associated sub-maps to designate Route seventy-two as manufacturing zoning from Patricia Lane to the village limits eastern most boundary line. Amending, I think these are all and ors, amending page seventeen of the comprehensive plan, future land use map and associated sub-maps to remove office zoning along Route seventy-two from Patricia Lane to the village limits eastern most boundary line. Amend all those page seventeen things to designate the Lion Eyes own property to multifamily residential zoning instead of single family zoning. And then on page seventeen, designating the southwest corner of Barrington Avenue and Route twenty-five as commercial zoning. These are the ones that I've, that I have the list on.
Okay. Is somebody pushing for these?
These I think were things that have been discussed. I mean, my understanding is these were discussion points that various points along the process, so just documented for discussion. The one on the automotive corridor, I remember us discussing, and like initial discussions a long time ago in a faraway place.
It feels like all of those items are very specific, whereas right now, I guess they're, they're general inside of a plan. And that's just trying to, I don't want to pigeonhole, but create more definitions on what this says. And I don't know, I guess, what the advantage of that is, other than maybe telling future boards what we think.
I have an argument.
What's that?
I have an argument in favor.
Yeah.
Go for it.
Based on my communication with the plan and zoning commission at various points in time, more guidance is more better. As far as making decisions and like designing, deciding on appropriateness-
Yeah.
When new projects come before plan and zoning. So that's the benefit to this. There's no saying that this board or any future board could ignore said guidance, but it is a benefit to planning and zoning to have more specific guidance.
Because this is the plan, not normans. So this is a guide.
It's a guide, it's a plan, it's not a rule.
It's the vision.
The more specific or the more intentional it is, the better, like, it's, it becomes a better tool.
You're aware of these changes that she just-
Generally, but if you could, yeah, you can send them to-
I was reading them off of a list. This did not come out of my brain.
No, a couple of them we did discuss some time ago, so.
I'm not saying we have to do them, I'm just saying they were points for consideration before, so.
Yeah, I get it. No, and I thought the, the auto dealership area along twenty-five made sense. I mean, it, it's where the majority of it is now, so.
Well, I guess my question would that be only south of, or-
Seventy-two?
Yeah. Yeah, would that only be s- south of seventy-two? Or would that be?
There's quite a few north as well.
I know there are.
Yeah.
I don't know that we want to make more of them. But, yeah, I guess that's my question. Is it written, on here it's not written specifically. I mean-
Yeah, if the board wanted to proceed with it for the entire stretch, they could, or you could just do south. But like, as was mentioned, there are other automotive uses in the northern stretch, and there are, there is available land for additional uses if that's to be desirable.
Also too, you know, while this is a really good document to have for the long term, I don't, it doesn't handcuff any future boards-
Sure.
Into one position, like you say. I mean, if it did pigeonhole anybody in the future, that wouldn't really be, you know, a responsible way to, to manage, because we don't know what we don't know ten, fifteen years from now. And if the average life expectancy of a comp plan is twenty to twenty-five years, you know, it could cause problems if we, we did lock anybody in. But it, I think it's an important guideline, a real strong guideline.
Yeah, it provides something to have a check against.
Right.
And it's almost like, you have this guideline, why aren't you using it? You know, is there a reason?
Right.
Is there a purpose? Like, is there some thing?
Well, I mean, like an example for the automotive specifically north of twenty-five, there was the dentist office that, that was a dentist office and a hair salon place that now was, is now a, a used car facility.
Right.
So having the-
New business before that.
Okay. And so, having that, you know, if this business were to leave, what is the direction of, of, do we want to, is it okay if it stays automotive, or do we really want to see something different there?
Yeah.
And I would argue that a lot of that is residential around it and probably could benefit from something besides automotive.
Mm-hmm.
So, I don't know.
Yeah.
Every time I, every time somebody said twenty-five and automotive, I pictured south of seventy-two. That's not, that has to be.
Right.
That's-
But even south of seventy-two, I mean, we have the old Walmart building. I wouldn't want to see that become an auto dealership, personally.
Or some of the Carmex or something like that.
It's, it's kind of the front door, and I don't know that that's what would be best there personally. You know, and, and Santa's Village obviously is on the other, the other side of the street, which we don't want to change. So, I mean, I, and then if you say, well, south of, say, south of Santa's Village, but as you go further south, there's what? There's Gat Guns and there's, you know, there's residential down there. I just don't know that, the stuff that's there right now is predominantly automotive. I guess I feel like that sets the template, you know, as it is. I don't know that we need to necessarily codify that further than what's already there. If anything, you know, I would, I would be more, more inclined to say like, oh, along seventy-two where we have these automotive places, we don't want that, you know? But I don't know how you would put that in here. But I, I just mean, like, stuff that's already there that we don't necessarily want to continue that use of is, is more important to me than saying, well, we already have all these auto businesses on Route twenty-five, why don't we put that in here that we want more? Like, I don't know that we need to. I think that if, if, if a dealership was coming to town, that's where they would look, because that's where all the auto dealerships are already.
Erica?
I think, I think part of this is, what is the highest and best use of this area?
Right.
And, and, you know, how do you determine that? You know, what's already there around it? What? And it's, it's like the houses that are down behind Gat Guns and that kind of thing. There were car dealers there for a long time before or as those houses were being built and occupied and purchased by the current homeowners. So it's not like a new thing is coming in to, along those, those residents. It's something that's already been there and something that they're, change is harder than just redoing the same thing, but with different faces and names, so.
Now, if you'll recall, there was a proposal for used car dealership to go in at Seven Hills Healthcare Building right there, which made no sense to us then.
Right.
If that were, something like that were to come in.
Well, that's, that's exactly what I was trying to say, like, on seventy-two, I'd like to say, we don't really want auto-
On twenty-five.
No, I mean, on seventy-two.
On seventy-two.
Oh, right, yeah.
Like, we don't really want, like, we have those there, but we don't really want them there. We can't kick them out, but we could say, in the future, when new places come, we'd rather they not be.
On seventy-two.
Yeah.
Makes sense on twenty-five, yeah.
So I don't know that if we'd say, well, on Route twenty-five, we want those, is that the same as saying we don't want them somewhere else?
I think from the perspective of the plan, it, it strengthens the village's argument going forward to deny those uses along twenty-five, or I'm sorry, along seventy-two, if there is a prioritized designated place for them elsewhere in town. So that is the only reason that this is sort of on the table.
And that's usually where your zoning comes in. And then, as I said at the last meeting, last month was after this becomes adopted, your comprehensive plan, usually the first steps is to update your zoning code to make sure it's consistent. And then in your zoning code, that's where you can say like, we, we would like auto car dealerships in B-one or B-two, or whatever districts you want. That way, over time, they know where to, where they can go. And if there's any that are currently there and you want them to phase out over time, then that can happen, depending on what's the underlying zoning, so.
And the zoning, that coding is what gives the comp plan a little more teeth.
Correct, that's the legally bounding part of your kind of policies, is your zoning.
So do we, so do we just leave it as designated, what, commercial, and then rely on the zoning changes to get more specific in the zoning? To, to five?
Those ones that you read in were legitimate, I thought they should be included in the comp plan, because they make sense now, they'll make sense ten years from now, with hope.
All five of them, you're saying?
All. I think some of them were and ors. I mean, but that is the process. If, if they are, if any of these amendments are, make it into the comp plan, then the zoning will follow. If not, then the zoning will stay the way it is.
Well, there's no harm including it in the comp plan if we don't end up changing zoning correct. I mean, it would just, I don't want to say it would be disregarded, but it won't really have as much impact if it ever came up.
I mean, I think the, the goal here is to get clear staff direction on what the board wants, so that when we start the process of updating the zoning code, we're not sort of doing something that is not desired.
So in walking through the amendments, number one, designate Route twenty-five as this kind of a, a standalone option. The, the other ones get into the Route seventy, some more than Route seventy-two, they're, so, you know, ticking them off, designate Route twenty-five as an automotive related use of cor, uses corridor for future development, do we, are we aligned with that?
Yeah, I think it would be helpful if we take them one at a time and say yes or no.
Yeah, exactly.
I just wanted to read them all in, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I didn't prefer it to be like one giant discussion.
No, 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 no. It's perfect. So just straw pull, is everybody aligned with that?
I'm fine with that suggestion, so that we can, when we do the zoning, focus on that. They can all, like, when the zoning changes, there can be more specificity as the exactly where, what, now.
If it's north, south, whatever.
I guess I would say, personally, I don't necessarily like number five.
James.
The one on-
Oh, wait, let's go with number one.
We're, we're starting with number one, you're starting with-
Oh, all right.
Number one. Let's go number, number one.
Sorry. Uh, okay, number one, designate Route twenty-five as an automotive related use corridor. Okay. I guess I don't, I don't necessarily dislike it. I, I don't know, yeah. I, I like it better than seventy-two, yes.
Yeah.
All right.
Let's say yes.
Second one.
So, sec, the second one is future land use, oh, yeah, designate Route seventy-two as manufacturing zoning from Patricia Lane to the village limits eastern most boundary line. And as part of that connected, like, I feel like two and three kind of smushed together-
Me too, yeah.
Because it would remove office zoning along seventy-two from Patricia Lane to the eastern most boundary.
We're just talking north of seventy-two, correct? On the north side?
Well, that's the only part that's in the village limits.
Well, but I mean, we, we do have annexed in some, all the Beverly, and as time goes on, hopefully the, that annexation will continue west.
So I actually don't mind the idea of office space out there.
I don't either. And that, isn't that part of what's in the, is it floaty and lumber road, yeah?
Yeah, there's medical.
Yep, there's, there's some office use up there.
Can it be both manufacturing and office? Is that?
In your zoning, when you have your permitted and special uses list in terms of what you like or want to accept, you can list office, and you can even specify specific offices if you want to be more specific. Because you may not want medical office, but you might want an office ancillary to an industrial.
Real estate office.
Correct.
Or just that or the other.
Yeah, and you can be specific about that.
Or, you know, offices being more adjacent or aligned on seventy-two where the manufacturing is behind and north of, of that.
Do you have a feel, Erica, is there?
I think that sounds completely reasonable, just, you know, yes on two and no on three?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
No. Okay.
Four is designating the Lion Eyes own property to multifamily residential instead of single family. I mean, as far as the comp plan goes, it's residential or it's just residential. Oh, no, I see, there is a difference.
So this would offer townhomes.
Uh, single family attached? Is that townhome? So there's single family detached, single family attached, and multifamily, are three separate designations on this map.
Oh, gotcha. So.
Where's the, where's the Lion Eyes on the map?
Behind DC Cubs-ish.
I know where you're talking about, I'm like thinking of somebody else, okay. And surrounding that area is all single family owned.
Yes. I'd be willing to go to townhomes. So single family attached? Not, not, like, I wouldn't necessarily want multi- Not, not, like, I wouldn't necessarily want multifamily there.
Big apartments?
Big apartments.
Right, I think it's a good use for it, considering the surroundings.
Okay, got it.
And four is, oh, wait, that was four.
That was four, that was four.
The last one is Barrington Avenue, um, basically sixty-eight and twenty-five, so
Five is.
this one is, has no recommendation from staff. It's a tricky parcel. It was purchased by somebody who would like to convert it to commercial from residential, but it is currently, uh, a rental home.
Mm-hmm. But it's re- also right adjacent to other rental homes. I mean, also, um, residential, single family.
Residential, single family.
Correct, yeah, it's, it's residential.
That our owner occupied.
With that Lot Two access is really gonna be an issue. I think that it's, since it's on two Illinois roads,
Yeah.
that access curts, whatever is gonna be necessary to make that accessible, is gonna be out of our hands. Um, so, you know, I know there's, there was talk years ago of changing the ordinance, or not the ordinance, I'm sorry, the zoning, uh, for that property, Joe, you probably remember that, um, and it just, it died on the vine. I actually thought it was already the zone commercial and apparently it's not. Um, but the owner has approached us.
Wait, I, I think the, I think the access is a huge issue because right now all of the residences, like three or four residences, you have to go on the frontage road to get into.
There is, and that's, yeah.
You can't get to it off of twenty-five because it's not safe. I mean, at Barrington because it's not safe.
Right. On the south of, uh, along twenty-five, on the west side of twenty-five, that frontage road really isn't meant for commercial traffic, if you will.
Right, no, I agree.
Access to it, so it complicates things further, so, um.
Yeah.
So we're saying that it should be residential?
Mm-hmm. It should stay residential.
It should stay residential, which is what's in the comp plan.
Yeah, I probably, yeah.
Correct. Yes.
It's not in, it, it's in the amendment, but in the original one it was, yeah.
Well, I think, yeah, I think currently it is zoned commercial. And the comp plan is suggest, is suggesting, like, its surrounding area, it go, come, it go residential. And I think the comp plan's correct, it should be residential. It's a house. It's a house, not a business.
It, it's a house.
So, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm open to whatever. If this guy has a plan, I'm open to it. I'd wanna see it though.
Absolutely.
And, and then make a decision based on that, not put it in this plan that it's gonna be commercial.
As one property, do we need to call it out in, in the comp plan?
Exactly. I think it should be zoned residential.
Probably not.
Yeah.
And.
Agreed.
Which it currently is, so.
So don't do the amendment, keep it as new.
Correct.
Get it.
Yes.
All right, okay.
So then, if we're gonna add these amendments, then does this still have to come back for final vote again, or?
No, we'll adopt it as amended.
Okay.
There was one other.
So it's, it's number one, number two.
Number four.
Number four.
Number four. But the four is the caveat of single family attached, not multifamily.
Three ways to remove office zoning from seven on seventy-two.
Single family attached.
So not as the amendment is written.
Right, not as written, but as would single family touch. The other thing is the proposed growth, that, that was the other thing that really stuck out to me in the comp plan when we were looking at it the last time. Do you happen to have that pop up?
Yeah.
Just the proposed, like, the, there were three scenarios provided for the proposed growth and it seemed like a lie.
The proposed rule?
It seemed like ten percent, which scenario, the biggest scenario.
Any of them, any of them.
I think that, I don't know that proposed is the correct term really, though, is it? Like, it's not a proposal to, it's more of an analysis.
Well, it's, it's growth planning and it's, I mean, there, there are options. So, yeah, I would suggest proposed is not an incorrect word. It provides three different scenario options.
So the scenario options are these right here, um, from left to right. Scenario A was your low growth, um, where you only really grew by two hundred new residents. Scenario B was moderate growth where you, uh, almost double your population, but that really assumes that you can redevelop a lot more property than you really have. And then when we talked to the steering committee for this group, or for the comprehensive plan, we realized that that's not really feasible. Um, and then that same, that same, um, conversation with scenario C, which is your high growth, which is basically multiplies your pop- current population by one and a half. So that, in both, in both A and B, or B and C scenarios, we realized that that, both of those were just not feasible, just because you don't really have much room to grow residentially. So that's why, um, the preferred land use plan was closer to A with a little bit of, um, B, and that's why, or that resulted in this. This is the preferred land use plan where the only real n- new residential growth you have is just south of, um, Higgins Road seventy, Illinois Route seventy-two. Um, but even that may not, that may take a while to, um, develop or may not develop at all.
Right.
So, um, so that, that growth scenario that you see down here where you grow, your po- your current population grows about forty percent, it all really depends on this area right here just south of seventy-two. And if, if none of that grows, then you're really grow, the only really growth you really have is probably the Hager property, any vacant properties you have in existing neighborhoods doing infill there.
Yeah.
Um, and that won't really grow your population a whole lot where it's like substantial growth. Your substantial growth will come from this property and whether or not that grows at all, or if it's piecemeal over time. And even by the time if a developer does look at this and say, proposes something, you may wanna amend your comp plan again.
Yeah.
Just because your priorities change as a community.
Yeah.
A lot of things can change between.
Okay. I just wanted to put that out there because it's been on my mind for a month now, so.
Let's get to talk about.
So the, the, so the two major properties for residential growth would be Hager and Lion Eyes if that were to open up. Is that what?
Yeah, I think so, and the, yeah, right.
Is that fair?
Yes.
Yeah.
I have to say it out loud, I'm sorry.
No, it's not, it's good to get it out there.
Yeah, shout it. Sorry. Shout it for another time.
Okay, was there anything else? Uh, anybody want to add anything, uh, that?
So we need to amend the motion?
Yes, yep, make the motion to amend.
Or, yeah.
So I will make a motion to amend the.
Ordinance presented. The comprehensive plan.
The comp plan we're gonna amend.
So I'm gonna make a motion to amend the comp plan.
And to adopt as amended.
And, and to adopt as amended with the following amendments.
Okay.
Um, I'm getting that. Uh, designating Route twenty-five as an automated, as an automotive related uses corridor for future development and or pa- amending seven, page seventeen of the comprehensive plan, future land use map plan and associated sub-maps to designate Route seventy-two as manufacturing zoning from Patricia Lane to the village limits easternmost boundary line and or amend page seventeen of the comprehensive plan, future land use map plan and associated sub-maps to designate the Lion Eyes own property to single family attached residential zoning instead of single family zoning.
Second.
Kayla.
Okay, so motion on the table, um, trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Coonsy?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Okay, that'll take us to item B. Thank you, uh, oh, by the way.
No problem.
Thanks.
If we could have a motion.
Uh, I will move to approve resolution accepting guidelines for the East Dundee Historic District.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments?
Yes.
You have some.
All right.
Well, I guess my comment is, you know, does this change the boundaries of our historic district at all?
The historic district guidelines? Uh, no, we did discuss the potential of that occurring whether currently or in the future. You do have that power at any time to amend it, but we did not amend it.
It's not built into the.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah. I wonder, how many residences are currently in the historic district? Do we know?
It's a good question. We didn't calculate. Um, I mean, most of it's commercial.
Right. Someone, uh, someone, right, um, Van Buren, really?
Mostly, yeah, um.
I don't know if we've got anything else.
Well, looking at Van Buren, it would just be, I think, I don't think there is any on Van Buren.
Right by Main Street.
Because that's the church.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
But I do wonder about on Third Street and Barrington. Well, I guess that's the village hall then, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, the residential is carved out.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, if you have any residential above the commercial properties east of the tra- or east of the trail, that would count, but I, I don't think it's a substantial amount of number of residents, but we didn't do a, a count of any sort.
I guess I do wonder, why is, why is north of Barrington considered a historic district when there's nothing there? Like, what are we protecting? The forest? I don't, along Van Buren though, or?
Are you talking about this big, um, at the very top?
Yeah, that big swath, there.
There's old office or industrial up there?
That. Yeah, that's office and industrial back there.
Mm-hmm.
That's behind, um, D.C. Cabs. Cops, thank you.
Three eleven, yeah.
It used to be that cabinet maker and behind the, the parking.
I mean, that is, is, does that all go that far back there? That goes way back there.
It, it does all the way to where the, the school's, uh, properties is, but.
That looks like it goes to the boundaries of East Dundee.
I wonder too, though, if we're gonna extend the historic district or if it is being proposed to be extended that far, would it make future development of that property, uh, more complicated?
Well, it's not extending it. That's where it is now.
That's where it is now, okay, so.
I don't think anything in here from reading this necessarily complicates things. It's just, it's a look and feel. You know, it's what, it, it's not like in other towns where you have to, like, get a certificate, like, to plaque your door and things like that. It's just really, what do we want the his- our historic downtown to look like?
Right, and I, and I agree that the, the downtown should be under this. I don't want residences to be under it. I want a lot of people to do what they wanna do to their houses, basically.
Yeah.
Um, I, yeah, I don't know. I, as long as there's no current residences under here, I'm good with that. I do wonder why, if we shouldn't just eliminate the portion that is behind D.C. Cabs, I don't understand.
The manufacturing part?
Yeah, because if anything, wouldn't that be, that'd be make it harder for us to, uh, raise those buildings. Maybe, maybe not hard really, but it would be harder. You'd have to go through a pr- approval process to do that.
From the P and Z.
From the A and Z, yeah.
So do we just wanna say to eliminate the manufacturing part of that?
So, before we eliminate anything. Erica's like, whoa, 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 whoa. There's really not that much more additional growth possibility for the downtown core.
Mm-hmm.
The, the area that does exist for that possibility is that northern portion. And so if somebody is going to redevelop that at some point, which I hope that they do because it would be
That manufacturing.
A mi- yeah.
A positive, net positive, they will have a set of guidelines to look at and say, oh, this is what the village wants.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's where, therefore, this is what I'm gonna have the best chance of succeeding with if I am to move forward with it. So it does, I wouldn't say it doesn't hamper anybody. This is adopted by a resolution, not an ordinance. This isn't going in the village code. This is going as a plan on our website with all of our other guidelines to give people more direction because, like you said earlier, more information, the more better. Um, very eloquently stated, thank you very much for that.
Yeah.
So I, I don't see any, any negative.
I do see on the very next page, though, there are a couple of residents in here, the, the yellow.
There probably are.
Oh, the next page in the document.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
This, um, the boundaries were created a long time ago and it wasn't part of this project to evaluate whether or not they should move or change. If we wanna move or change them,
Fair.
happy to have the PZC take that on.
That sounds good. Sounds like a problem for another group.
Well, I think that the only, I think that the only one would be that one house with the tin roof.
Oh, here in the downtown here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's the only residence that would be on this map.
Yeah, because the other thing labeled as a residence is actually village hall, so.
Yeah, exactly. Indeed.
And isn't the one at the north, let's see, north, northwest corner of Main and Van Buren, it, it's a house but zoned downtown business district. Isn't that the house right at the corner of Main and?
It is. The. The brick.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, well, yeah, I guess that one is.
Van Buren and seventy-two.
That's, that's residence.
The, the big brick one, yeah.
That is a house but it's zoned, not the house.
Yeah.
That would be the only residence maybe, so.
The one right next to the old Dick West Real Estate?
Oh, residence, interesting. So, hmm, okay. Well, if we're not doing boundaries, it doesn't matter, right?
Anyway. Yeah.
Right, so.
I was curious.
I just marked them as problems for Plankton's help.
Okay. Yeah. Sorry, Kayla.
So are we good with, uh,
Yeah.
with the idea then?
I am, yeah.
Any other further questions, comments? Nope?
No.
Kayla?
So, motion to approve, uh, resolution accepting guidelines for the East Dundee Historic District, uh, trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Coonsy?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Okay, then that'll take us to item C, if we could have a motion.
I will move to approve resolution adopting a twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-eight strategic planning and development initiative.
Okay, this one falls in line with our comp plan. Oops, sorry.
That's okay.
Jumped again.
We have, oh.
Okay, I can barely see. I don't.
You want me to turn on light, Doc?
Yes, please.
Do you want to recite, or?
Yes.
Go left one more down. Look, uh, two more to go.
What?
Right, about that, right, bud. Next to you, left, left.
Um, okay. Okay, sorry about that. Um, so NIU was not able to be here to present the plan, so I am here on their behalf, um, so bear with me. Um, so the strategic plan was adopted, um, or I'm sorry, was presented to the board for consideration to begin, um, in December of twenty twenty-three, and we started the process officially January twenty twenty-four, um, and it completed in March of this year. Um, the purpose of the plan, uh, I'm sorry, part of the plan was to develop, um, where NIU conducted a environmental scan. Um, they also gathered stakeholder input and held a collaborative, uh, leadership workshop, which all of you participated in. Um, the strategic plan provides a clear framework to help guide the village's priorities and initiatives through twenty twenty-eight, so it starts this year. Um, the strategic plan was developed in tandem with the comprehensive plan, which we just talked about, um, to ensure alignment across community goals. Um, how did those things align? So we did, um, tie the strategic planning goals to the comprehensive planning objectives. We did share information as we developed, um, both plans and also, um, uh, the purpose of the plan is to also align the strengths, um, from the village board and provide policy direction and also prioritize goals. Um, and this will in turn help to support coordinated implementation and, uh, resource planning. So we developed the plan again by doing the environmental scan. Um, this included gathering internal and external input. We interviewed, um, different community members. We held focus groups with businesses, um, residents and other community stakeholders. And we also did a community survey. After NIU gathered that in- information, they prevent, presented some of that information to our village board and our, uh, senior staff level and our, uh, senior staff level in a leadership workshop, where we all sat together and developed a vision for the village. Um, we went over the strengths, weaknesses, uh, opportunities, and also challenges that we see within the village. And then we worked together to develop some goals. After that workshop, NIU sent out a survey to village board members and staff, where you were asked to rank in order of priority, um, some of the goals that were pre- that we developed during the workshop. And again, this is integrated across both the strategic plan and also the comprehensive plan. So the strategic plan is set to start in twenty twenty-five, if approved, and will be used through twenty twenty-eight. And the three strategic areas that we developed, um, or that we kind of lumped each of the goals into, are connectivity, rec- uh, recreation and beautification, that's one. Number two is organizational and infrastructure growth and advancement. And the third strategic priority area is the downtown economic development and redevelopment. Any questions?
The, um, implementation portion of it on the first slide that you put up where it talked about or mentioned, uh, resource planning? Oh, next one, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Did that, I don't, I'm not recalling, did that touch on financing?
No, so as we, um, go through and develop our bo- our village budget annually, I always try to include the strategic planning, um, goals as we go through them. But, um, you know, it's difficult to obtain any budgeting type of information as we're talking high level.
Right, and, yeah, for something so far down the road, it's something that's a problem.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so the first strategic priority area is connectivity, recreation and beautification. They define that as long-term planning and investment in recreational assets such as the river, riverfront, to continue to be draw- a draw for residents, potential businesses, and help increase tourism. The opportu- the opportunity also, um, exists to improve connectivity in the village by connecting walking paths and adding additional green space for community events and leisure. Based on our workshop, we developed four related strategic goals that, um, fall under this priority area. Those are, um, develop a plan to maximize, to maximize riverfront utilization for recreation and events. This is something that, um, was very high on a priority list. Um, and that includes the addition of park and green space and connecting, uh, paths such as the biking path, et cetera. Um, and also to utilize the depot for more community events and, um, to cons- also consider additional parking. The second area is to focus on the development and beautification of, um, village entryway, entryways, especially along Route seventy-two, and that includes using art installations in the process. Um, they also mentioned revitalizing Main Street by burying utility lines in the downtown area, and also making other infrastructure updates to draw more business and tourists to, um, Eastundy. Um, another goal is to create a comprehensive walking, biking and pedestrian plan, which we talked about earlier tonight. And that is to help connect Route seventy-two to, to River Street, and also potentially rerouting traffic patterns to reduce or eliminate high volume, uh, truck travel, especially in the downtown area. Any questions?
A quick one, that'd be for Joe. Uh, you know, when we, we buried lines earlier, what was it, maybe five, seven years ago? I'm wondering if those lines, can, can we still use that conduit to continue burying existing lines? Or do we, are we gonna have to break ground to do any further work?
Well, that was kind of, yeah, I don't know if they built in any.
Wasn't AT&T as well?
Okay, so that was their high-power line.
Okay, right, right, okay. Well, and then also we got rid of the, the phone, the telephone pole. That was right in front of the ambulance plug in the middle of the street, so, uh, we buried that one. And so I'm wondering if along Barrington Avenue, would we be able to hook into whatever it is that we tapped underground? And, you know, use that same conduit system that we put in.
But typically, they don't like to share conduits, so we're gonna make sure.
Oh. Okay. How big a line was that?
It was a six inch, two six inches long.
Six? So we're gonna tear it up to get at it?
We gotta make a directional board, get that done.
Yeah, okay. Okay, cool, thank you.
The second, um, strategic priority area is the organizational and infrastructure growth and advancement. They define this as proactive planning and strategic investments in the village's infrastructure are essential to ensuring village facilities and personnel levels are sustainable and can accommodate potential growth. The expansion of village hall to accommodate growth and staffing will enable the village to adapt and plan for changes in population, demographics and tourism, uh, positioning the community for long-term success. Now, there are ten goals that fall within this strategic area. Um, and two, the first two kind of go hand in hand, which is the development of the lead service, uh, line plan and also the replacement of the lead service lines. Uh, the third area is to continue to improve the village's bond rating, which is something that we've been working on since I started here. Um, the next is to purchase or hire consultants to work on our GIS system. I kind of missed that word. Um, but we are in process of doing that now. The next is to ensure the police pension fund is fully re- uh, fully funded. Uh, we also plan to explore regional collaborations with surrounding communities to share equipment and personnel. Um, and this is to provide cap- economies of scale, increase efficiency and provide, um, improved deliveries, uh, ser- improved service delivery, sorry. Uh, next is to focus on recruitment and retention of village staff, um, update the village's operation plans, emergency operations plan. Next, to develop and update the village's communication plan, um, to engage the public and inform residents about progress on village projects and events. And lastly, to maintain a healthy fund reserve in both the general fund and water sewer funds.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Knowing that this is for twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-eight, I don't think we're gonna fund the police retirement fund in its entirety in that period of time. Uh, I'm a little nervous about the fully funded wording.
It's a lofty goal.
That's a lofty goal for the next three years.
It says, say, ten to fifteen years.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just wanna be sure, because the, I think at the beginning it did say twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-eight.
So some of these goals are short-term and, and long-term, and we'll talk about that as we go.
Sorry. That's a favorite, that's, it can happen by twenty twenty-eight, so.
So the plan is there for like a three to four-year period, but we expect that some things will con- continue on after.
Thank you for that.
Yes.
Our contributions to the police, uh, pension fund though, was slated or with the target of thirty, twenty thirty-six?
Twenty thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight?
Mm-hmm.
It depending on what the state does, we'll be ahead of the twenty forty dates.
We've been trying to meet Lotterbach and Amen's, um, recommended funding level.
Mm-hmm.
So that's what we fund to and not to the state's recommend.
Which is great. That and the already improved bond rating, all good things?
Yeah.
Okay, and the last strategic priority level is, or I'm sorry, area is downtown economic development and redevelopment. They define this as the village of Eastundy's rich history and charm lend themselves to suc- successfully, successful business and industrial districts. Continued focus on existing development projects will be important to achieving E- Eastundy's economic goals, including increasing tourism dollars and recruiting new businesses that will complement and diversify the village's current business mix. There are six related strategic goals for this area. And they are to build and secure an outdoor off-street mixed-use entertainment venue, and also add a band shield, um, for events. To complete the village's redevelopment projects, um, research and explore options for annexing the properties to the east, including Pilote, um, invest in redeveloping the Route twenty-five corridor, create a development plan for two and four, four North Van Buren, four oh eight Barrington and the lumberyard. And to, um, evaluate the ve- the development plans for the Hager pottery site.
As, as far as the, um, investing in the redevelopment of twenty-five, um, have we considered, um, the extension of the BDD that we have in mo- in place now? Have we talked about that? I mean, cause that's one of the tools we have to finance that redevelopment. So I know though, that it's been in place for, oh man, at least, uh, probably close to fifteen years, so they, uh, I think it's, what is it, a twenty-year life?
I think it has less than ten years left on it.
Uh, yeah, I would think. So, I mean, we can, and if we were to, if the village were to choose to extend, we, we don't have to get the permission of all the other governmental entities or units the way we would with a TIF, do we? Because that, that's kind of eternal.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know for you.
We would not need to, but it would, you know, the, the, it's less common to extend those than it is other economic development strategies.
Okay, just curious.
Okay. So after our workshop, the village board and senior level staff members were presented with the survey, and we were all asked and tasked with, um, ranking those goals that I previously presented, um, by level of high, medium and low. Um, and the score that, the goal that had the lowest score was considered to be a high, the highest priority. So, I'll go over the top three short-term and the top four long-term strategic goals. The other, um, goals ranking are in the packet. Okay, so the top three high priority short-term goals, um, was the development of the Hager pottery site, um, replacing the lead service lines, and also the development of the village's communication plan. The top four, I'm sorry, and the short-term goals are one to three, three years. That's how long they a- anticipate, um, staff being able to implement and complete those goals. The high priority long-term goals are anywhere between four and eight years, and, um, there are four of those. Also includes, uh, the lead service line plan and replacement. Also ensuring that the police pension fund is fully funded, um, improving the village's bond rating, and also the development of those projects that we talked about, Hager, the barn, Van Buren, um, yes. Any questions? And finally. The strate- the strategic plan, um, is a roadmap for the village to make decisions and also to prioritize budgeting, um, for specific projects, which is something that we do every year when we budget. Um, it is recommended by NIU to review, um, and monitor the progress of the plan and to make adjustments as needed. The plan is flexible and should be adapted to, uh, meet the community priorities as they evolve. And finally, the strategic plan encourages consistent alignment with community and organizational goals. I won't go into the comp plan. But they are both linked and connected. They do share a vision, um, and yes, that is all for me. And this is our project team, so if you have any questions, you can reach out to them and I can send you the PowerPoint, cause I don't think it was included. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, friends. Okay. If there's no other questions?
How much of that, how much of this document that is in the packet is actually going to be published as part of, as the strategic plan, this entire entirety of this with the appendix and everything?
That is the fourth one.
Yeah, okay.
We can make adjustments. We don't have to include the appendix either.
Yeah, I was just curious, that's fine.
Hey, anybody else? No, two.
So, a motion to approve a resolution adopting, uh, a strategic planning and development initiative? Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Kunsy?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Okay, that leads us to the last item, which is a discussion and direction regarding hemp regulations. Erica, would you like to open this one up?
Sure, so we had this discussion starting last fall, and we were sort of waiting for potential action from the state to regulate this. Uh, that didn't happen. There's still talk that it may happen. Um, but in the interim, there's still some recommendations from staff and also some requests from trustee Soder that we look at to see if there is an appetite to do some local regulation. So, uh, chief Fordice has taken the lead on this, and he can answer any questions and help guide us through sort of the proposed items.
Okay. Well, currently, chief, uh, what, the state is taking a hands-off on this particular item, correct? I mean, they chose not to even touch it.
They don't, they don't decide, they're not closely involved whether they want to.
Right, okay. Is there any reason why they're ignoring this? I mean, this is like saying, you know, we're not gonna put an age restriction on light beer because the, the alcohol level is not that high. You know, it makes no, this one has never made any sense to me. So, um, but we, as a, I mean, it, obviously as a, a home rules town, we can say what we will allow to be sold in our town and what we won't. Um, personally, I don't think this is a product that reflects well on the village or any village, to be honest with you. So I would have no trouble at all supporting the idea of restricting it altogether. Uh, but, uh, it, it just, it complicates your job and your staff, because now we've gotta, we've gotta police it, you know? And when we talk about, I don't really know if there are any benefits necessarily to talk about with this stuff. So that's why I think, you know, rather than complicate things with regulations and so forth, uh, that we have to constantly monitor, it'd be easier just eighty-six it altogether. So that's where I stand. Has there been any further problems with any other locations that are selling this other than the one we had?
Just the one.
Just the one, okay. So, um, I'll open it up to the board. Any other questions or concerns?
Chief, was there something you were gonna stay on it?
There's two, there's two more bills that are out there right now. Um, again, I can't tell you one way or the other, whether or not somebody passed. But, but one is gonna restrict the age to any THC product to twenty-one years and ol- of age or older. And then one outright bans the use of kratom or the possession of kratom, so. Those are the two things that are still out there right now.
Okay.
I mean, I'm fine with the recommended restrictions, you know, it.
That's in, in this proposal from Andy?
Yeah. Just looking at, looking through those, I think they make, they make sense. I, we already have to, I mean, we have to police the sale of cig- the sale of cigarettes. We have to police the sale of alcohol, so.
Other municipalities are restricting this to twenty-one years of age and over, and that would, that would be my recommendation.
Right now, we're at eighteen, is that what?
We're at nothing.
We're at nothing. We're going from zero to something.
Yes.
And that's the.
I support twenty-one.
Yeah, twenty-one and the packaging, like the, don't target kids, stuff like that.
Do they have licensing or just, it's just the age restriction?
Just the age restriction.
They have, yeah.
No, I mean, other municipalities, yeah, I was just curious.
Some municipalities have taken a stance on some of the packaging, like making it very clear that it has to, the packaging has to say twenty-one and over, for example. And then some of the packaging, you could. And then some of the packaging, you could argue, targets kids, for example. It's, it's, it's sold as, to look like Skittles, for example, you know, which is a public safety issue.
So, that, that packaging restriction, if a municipality were to put that in place, would that be on the back of the retailer or on the manufacturer? Because that would be a much more difficult thing to have.
That's my question.
The manufacturer, it's coming to them with the packaging restriction, that sort of thing, that's fine. But if then we're gonna rely on the other way to have the retailer affix some sort of warning or whatever, that becomes a different issue.
I mean, you have a choice as a retailer on what product you sell. So, you can always choose not to sell the product that is targeting children. You can choose to sell a different, a different version of the product. It doesn't have to be the Skittles version.
You could choose to add the label to it.
Yes.
Required locally if it's not already on there.
To your, to your point, trustee Britton, the smoke shop that is on Main Street just downtown, he specifically said that. He won't even market products that are tailored towards children.
Right. And that's, it's, it's easy enough to purchase as a retailer of any product. You can choose what product, what specifically you purchase.
It's the way, I can have, the way I regulate that too, if you're a rural, to want to regulate that at the retail level, would probably be through a business license.
Yeah.
Well, and that's an interesting point, cause, you know, I've, I've done a little digging, and the whole notion of the business license when it comes to, you know, not the impact, but the teeth that a municipality has regarding that is vague. And so, you know, I mean, if we put on a business license restriction or expectation that you're not gonna be selling this stuff to kids, that kind of thing, or tie it to that, I'm just wondering if it's gonna have the same effect.
We could do a balance suspend, which you could have, the furnace gas that requires game limits and restrictions, and then also make it part of the business license requirement.
Okay, and then, of course, if we did an age restriction, we would then put them on the same protocol that we would have with regard to alcohol and tobacco.
Tobacco, same thing.
Yeah.
Be at a minimum, we need to do with this stuff. So, we can't dictate, though, the packaging and the allure it provides or poses to.
It gets dicey unless you do it through business license.
Well, but I mean, so it would be, we would necessarily then be restricting what manufacturers or what product or brands that they would be allowed to carry, in other words.
When you said the business license, how, when we grant the business license, we do a stipulation sign, you mean?
Sorry. The other thing I would question would be, who, who gets to dictate what is and what isn't alluring to an underage individual?
The issue I was getting at.
Yeah.
So, is this, are these establishments currently considered special use permit establishments, or are they just under general use?
General.
So, would it be possible to start there, maybe, and just put in any of these businesses that sell these products under special use?
And that's an interesting point, cause it would probably be easier to enforce the rules that we want them to have by pulling that special use permit, and it would have a whole lot more effect than.
Going forward, yes, the problem is the retailers that are selling it now.
Well, why wouldn't they be subject to whatever restrictions we put in today?
Cause it's a zoning regulation, so if they were permitted to do it before each user zoning code, then there's.
The grandfather.
Why would zoning be involved here? We're talking about products that are special uses.
Special use is a zoning thing.
Well, okay, if we.
In and under.
Well, we can do a regulation, and then they have to follow the regulation of twenty-one and over. So, we can go that route and not worry about the zoning.
Then it's the department over there.
Right.
Can we add, if it is not already, something about product must remain in original packaging? Is that, I mean, I feel like that's sort of a safety measure.
And we need to look at where they keep it in the store and cut.
I think we have enough direction to draft something, you think so?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is great.
Great.
This is, these, this is really helpful.
Just out of curiosity, did we talk to, I think his name is Kevin?
That establishment.
Yeah, well, the one in downtown. Oh, about any of this?
I didn't.
What's that?
I didn't.
You did?
Yeah.
That was when you said Kevin doesn't sell anything that's geared towards children.
He specifically won't market those products, he, he wants third-party testing, et cetera, so.
Great.
Chief, has the one that was in question with the problem of twenty-five seventy-two, have they been, have they changed at all in their willingness to work with us?
The one that's kind of kicked all this off?
Yes.
I'm, I'm gonna refrain from commenting.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. All right, good, well, I think at a minimum, then, the idea, well, like you say, we've got a couple of points here that we can put something together, so.
We'll shoot for the second meeting in May.
In May, okay.
It's gonna take us a little while to put something together.
That works.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly. Okay, well, that will take us to reports. Church, wanna start off?
Yeah, no report.
No report, Scott? Um, no report. No report, I have nothing, and so we'll go to Kathleen.
I'm sorry to, I'm sorry to slow down the progress here. Phil, spring banner timing. We still got, I'm sorry, I haven't been on downtown to see the banners, but we still have all the Christmas stuff up and Oktoberfest stuff up. What are we looking up for timing on putting those up?
Immediately, the guys started replacing them on Friday, and we're going to continue this morning up at the Highlands. We pull off on the vacation, um, so I would imagine they're gonna be back at it tomorrow morning.
Awesome, great. Also, Phil, thanks for putting, and, and staff, thanks for putting the, the update on the spongy maws and taking a look at things. I was gonna speak to you about it, or part of my report. Do we still have plans on getting the traps from the state like we have in the past?
This year, yes.
And I'm hoping, we are, we are kind of comparing apples to oranges from year to year because the traps have changed. Will we, do we have any say in it, or can we get the same traps as we had last year? Cause some are more attractive than other, than others.
I can request the trap that they provided to us, they provided all the traps so far.
Yeah.
I can request the same style that we did in twenty twenty-four.
Right, okay, perfect. And then, as far as strategically laying them out in the village, I know some of them were in new places. And I'm hoping what we could do is try and track, at least to put half of the traps that we get in where we had the highest counts last year, so we can see how that changes from year to year. And then half, the other half in new locations or similar, similar to what you had done in the past. Thank you. Um, and I wanted to say, thank Catherine and anybody else that was involved in the update on the new vendors for the events. It's very exciting to see that we've got a whole lot of new vendors and expansion of vendors. And, um, did we, did, did, did the sighting for the tents happen? I know you guys have established where you wanted, or.
Yeah, she ended up working that out, so we didn't have to do the walk around.
That's great. So, that's really exciting to see that evolution, and we'll see in, in two months where we land with that. Also, exciting to see the Motor Monday as part of that participation. And they have something open on Monday nights, particularly. So, and do those participants have a good understanding that they can't be on the street? They need to be either on the sidewalk or, and I, I really don't wanna have people going into and out of the brick and mortar portion of their business, cause then that starts getting into, edging into the open carry. Um, do they, do we have a good plan from, from them on where they're citing, planning on citing their stands?
For Motor Mondays.
For Motor Mondays specifically.
As far as the sidewalk service?
Yeah.
Yes, I believe that she's spoke to all of the potential vendors for that, those events, and they have charted a course of how to come back.
Okay. All right, awesome. Then, um, the food trucks are back at Max Motors, the A Lotte, and, and Gat Guns El Torosco. And I'm hoping we now have licenses, food truck licenses on file for these two.
So, staff did reach out to both of those, and we are working with them to get them into compliance.
All right.
Currently not in compliance.
Okay. And then, um, Ruben Road, I just saw your email, thank you for sending that to Scott Crane and the guy that brought up the issue with the public safety and the buses and, and the school backing up on that, and thanks for all your hard work then. Meeting with all of the different agencies that are kind of involved with keeping that safe, and that's all I have.
Okay, Karen.
Um, Phil, the lights on River Street, are they all lit now?
Cause some of them on the trees were off for a bit.
The tree light?
Yeah.
I'll find out.
Okay.
In fact, I'll, I'll take a look at it for me.
Sounds good.
Yeah, some are, sorry.
And then, I think Chris probably, we have random flag situation going on in our historic district downtown. We have doing new guidelines and things like that. I just wanna make sure that any rules about flag usage and what types of flags are good and bad and all that are being applied. We've had some complaints in the last week or two, so. Thank you.
That's all. Okay, that's it, okay. We'll go to Steph and start with the first turn.
Um, just a reminder that on May eighth, we invite you all to our biennial seminar, so half-day seminar. Um, we're talking about local municipal issues here around the Chicagoland area, all of staff and all the trustees and, um, we're invited. So, we hope you all can join us, I know we have a lot of our subpoenas so far for you guys, but not all of you.
No, Joe. Kelly. Chief.
Louiana Wells and Jordan Lobel both are entering the candidates, right?
Congratulations to them.
That's it, Phil.
Norville.
No, friends.
Um, we are in the middle of our audit, so just in case you get any fraud or assessment questions from our auditors, that's what that's from. Um, and that's it.
Okay, great, and Erica.
I just wanted to give a big thank you to all the staff who worked for over a year on the comp plan and the strategic plan, passing all of this tonight and adopting that is really helpful to staff and really, will really, I think, benefit the community. And it's a lot of work to put all that together, and a lot of appreciated participation from the board as well. So, I think we ended up with a better result because of the participation of everybody, and appreciate that, so thank you.
Okay, I got wrapped up tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been a long time, actually, we've been working our. So, okay, that'll conclude us, are we going to do executive session?
Very brief executive session.
Briefly, okay, so we will adjourn into executive session, which.
Under C twenty-one discussion minutes.
Discussion of minutes, so.
I will move to close with public and media and provisions of the Illinois Open Media Act, five ILCS, one twenty slash two, for C twenty-one discussion of minutes, and we will be adjourned out of public, or executive session, not returning to public.
Great. Okay, well, I'd like to thank everybody for attending tonight.
We need to, we need to vote.
Uh, trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntzey?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Okay, again, thank you all.
I'm not even leaving, I'm gonna stay right here. Perfect.